Well, we're starting at seven. Oh, it's seven.
We still have a second.
It is 7:00 PM, and I call the City of Delaware Planning Commission for May 4th, 2016 to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Badger.
He stepped out for a moment. I expect him back soon.
I'll say his name again. Mr. Halter. Mr.?
I'm here.
Mr. Mansoris?
Here.
Mr. Pearl?
Here.
Ms. Tuckerbuck?
Here.
Vice Chairman Simpson?
Here.
Chairwoman Keller?
Here.
Moving on to item two, would the clerk please read this into the record? Approval of the motion summary, the planning commission meeting held on April 6th, 2016 as recorded and transcribed. What is the wish of the commission on this item?
Make a motion we approve the summary of the planning commission meeting held on April 6th, 2016 as recorded and transcribed.
Motion by Mr. Halter?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pearl. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Badger? Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Mansoris?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Ms. Tuckerbuck?
Upstate.
Vice Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Chairwoman Keller? Yes, and for the record, Mr. Badger has rejoined us.
Sorry about that. 1.7.
That's okay. Moving on to item three, regular business, would the clerk please read item A into the record? Item A, 2016-1086, a request by Columbia Gas for approval of a development plan exemption to allow the construction of a gas receiver on 0.735 acres, zoned M2, general manufacturing, located on the southeast corner of Pittsburgh Drive and Section Line Road intersection. Okay, who is the presenter?
I am, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
The subject site is located south of Pittsburgh Drive, east of South Section Line Road, zoned industrial. Aerial, see, it's fairly flat farmland. There is a small creek going through the larger site. The applicant's proposing a, what they call a gas receiver in this area to ensure their future maintenance to their pipeline network in high quality of service to the city and the property owners in the city. The access to this site would be about 300 feet west of South Section Line Road on Pittsburgh Drive. The apron and the drive to the fence would be made of concrete. There would be a six-foot-high fence enclosing the, the equipment for this gas receiver. Inside that, that would be gravel in there. The six-foot-high fence would be black vinyl-coated and have barbed wire at the top with black privacy slats. Currently, the engineering department's reviewing the engineer's plans. There'd be no signage or lighting in this application. There would be landscaping. They're proposing eighteen, minimum six-foot-high pine trees to buffer this from Pittsburgh Drive and South Section Line Road, which would provide a good buffer. It'd be soldier course to there, 20 feet on center. Staff recommends approval with three conditions. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Ma'am, Chair member of the commission, just want to say that Columbia Gas is here this evening, can answer any questions. I think they want to talk a little bit just about the project and the safety of the project, the purpose of it, but Diego Cantano is here, and I gotta say that Columbia has done, sometimes utilities get a bad rap. Sometimes it's deserved, just like the city, sometimes it's not, but Diego and his team have done a really good job with this project in reaching out to us very early, bringing on professional engineering staff, and working with us and our engineers and the landowner on this project as well. So, we appreciate the help and the cooperation from another public entity. And we do recommend approval. Happy to answer any questions. I think they may want to talk a little bit about the project.
Okay. Would the applicant please come forward? Yes, please. We just need your name and your address for the record, please.
Diego Cantano, project manager, Columbia Gas, 1600 Dublin Road, Columbus, Ohio, 4215.
Okay. Did our clerk get that? Okay. Okay. We'd love to hear more about your project.
Well, this is a project, to make a long story short, we have different systems with different pressures. This system that you're looking at starts in New Albany, the city of New Albany. We have what we call a tomboy station. That's a place where we receive gas from other companies that go across the country. And this system from New Albany, the New Albany tomboy station makes it all the way down to Pittsburgh Drive. So, we're talking about 24-20-inch pipe. This is a special pipe for a reason. It's called transmission class. That means that in the eyes of the federal government, we need to have more eyes on it, more following up, maintenance operation. So, what you're looking at is what we call a launcher receiver for an inline inspection tool or pick, that's what we call a picks. Basically, what they do is we send something inside the pipe and to check the condition of the seam from the inside out. So, we check on the wall thickness, if it's corroded, if it's something on the way. And that's basically improving the safety of the system. Basically, what we're looking at is making sure that the pipe is in condition at all times. So, we send several of them. You know, the first one is a cleaning, the other one is a caliper, and then comes what we call a smart pick. That's the one that comes with all the antennas, cameras, and that's the one that makes all the analysis from the inside out. So, there's the launcher, which is going to be in New Albany, and the receiver, which is here. This is the tail end of our system, important system for Delaware, important system for the north of Columbus. It's a main trunk. And again, what we're looking is condition of the pipe, basically, very safe, very well-located, lot of ventilation. It's an industrial park. We did an analysis, risk, risks towards the system and our impact in the area. We analyzed everything and it's very low impact as far as, you know, what's affecting us. As far as us impacting the communities, as again, it's an industrial area. We have a quarry and we have a sub- electric station and an airport, which is about fitness away from us. What was impacting us was, we did a little more investigation on the quarry, thanks for David Burns, Robert, because they did blasting activities. We were concerned about, you know, the systemic reaction every time they blast on our system, on our pipe. We met with the quarry. They provided all the information, and there's absolutely nothing we need to do because the impact on the receiver is minimal, to say nothing. So, basically, this is what it is. The system above ground is not going to be pressurized. There's going to be a valve, which is going to be underground. So, once we receive the pick, we shut the valve, we vent, and all the system that is going to be above ground is going to be depressurized. So, there's no concern on that regard. I don't know if you guys have any question. I'll be more than happy. Keep continuing talking all night.
It sounds like you have a lot of passion for this.
Yeah.
I have one question. The lighting, it says that no lighting is proposed. I'm just thinking from a security, safety standpoint, why wouldn't there be lighting there? Or a need for lighting?
Yeah. This is only a section of pipe. There's nothing. We put lighting in places where, let's say we have radiator stations, equipment skater, it's tele-monitoring, but this is just a piece of pipe, you know, to make it simple. It's a piece of pipe above ground, and there's nothing on it. So, we don't really need to put lighting. Now, we also have to be conscious about the costs. I mean, we have customers, and when it comes to those things, we try to minimize the cost of our operations. So, if it's not needed, we don't really use it. That's why we're not excited there.
I have two questions. One for staff. God knows, I hope it never happens, but it has happened before. A plane should hit this thing. What kind of fire are we talking about? Are we talking about major problems? Or are we talking about, okay?
It's probably, it's probably the wrong way of, I mean...
No, no, I'm, yeah. A couple of years ago, we had an airplane crash, okay, just coming in out of land. Okay. Now, we all hope it never happens. But I'm just saying is, what would be the impact, okay? If a plane did happen in this thing, would it explode? Would it continue to burn?
As I mentioned, the above-ground structure is going to be depressurized, meaning that there's not going to be gas. It's going to be, it's going to have isolation valves. So, if it crashes, you know, now there's a chance for a leak, you know? I mean, if it pushes and breaks, like any other leak, we react to them immediately. For us, in our eyes, a leak in a house or a leak in a main system, we treat them the same, you know? So, I mean, our reaction, we have teams 24/7. And in addition, explosion, when you talk about explosion, they just, for the gas to combust, give you a mix of air and gas, and it's between 5% and 50.5% concentration. Those conditions for that to happen in a space like this, I mean, it's almost, I would say, almost impossible. On top of that, you need an igniter, someone with, you know, something to turn that on.
So, the gas itself will be underground.
Correct.
Only thing on top is a pressurized system.
Correct.
Pressurized, what's underground.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
So, above ground is not even pressurized here.
I mean, there might be a little. I mean, it's going to smell a little because we apply our captain. So, people tend to think that, you know, there's gas, but it's just the smell, but there's no pressure on that above-ground system. Thank you.
Will there, once this is built, will there be traffic in and out of this area? And if so, how much?
Yes. The reason we have a driveway is because we're going to have company vehicles coming in and out.
Is that daily?
Monthly basis. No, monthly basis. Yeah, monthly, quarterly. So, you know, it's not every day.
Okay. Thank you. We did receive an email from a resident. I feel like most of the concerns that were brought up in his email have been addressed regarding safety.
Yeah, I think it's possible we're pointing out that this is, there's certainly major industrial development around here, some of which is combustible and deals with combustible materials itself. There's also a main gas transmission line running through the industrial park. That's partially why they want to do this. It already exists and services those customers as well. And about, I'm going to say about eight years ago or so, Columbia Gas put in a regulator station right about at the bend of Pittsburgh Drive. You might, if you were out looking at the sites, you might have seen that as well. So, there is already a line out there.
Would the development plan exemption go over to city council?
No. You're the check and balance to us making a determination of exemption. This is a small enough case, small enough footprint that we would be very comfortable making that exemption
My other question is to staff. You know, the dust factor is gravel, and I understand why they're using gravel here, but are they going to have to dust-proof that as we would anybody else?
I think the majority, they actually have a paved apron coming into it, and the majority of the area is, that's gravel, is off of the roadway, and with the limited access to and from that area, we didn't feel it was necessary to have them worry about dust in this application.
You're putting any type of dust control down, right, like that?
For the minimal traffic that's going to be in there, no. We haven't, that wasn't something we felt was necessary.
Well, a lot of times, not just traffic, but the wind itself kicking up. I'm just bringing up because we have, you know, we have part of our, lost for words here, part of our regulations is, if you have a gravel driveway or a parking lot, blah, 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 there's going to be dust-proofing. Making sure that we don't, if they can do it, why can't somebody else?
Right.
That's always my concern. If it's good enough for one, then it's good enough for the rest of us.
We'd certainly make sure that if dust is a problem, that Columbia Gas address that. But also, this is not pea gravel you're talking about, putting in the site. It's the larger, I forget the numbers, size of gravel.
Probably 57s.
I don't know.
Number 26.
With that kind of gravel, in my opinion, that would not be a problem with wind or anything.
Yeah.
From my experience with gravel county roads. It's a good question, but I think we thought about that a little bit, the size of the gravel and the nature of this operation.
It's more of a base for their equipment than it is a driving surface, I guess, is the way we kind of looked at it.
Nope. Thank you, sir. I appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you all for your time and consideration. Thanks, Lance. Thanks, David.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that item 2016-1086 by Columbia Gas be approved with the conditions of staff.
Motion by Mr. Badger. Second by Ms. Tuckerbuck. Roll call, please. Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Mansoris?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Ms. Tuckerbuck?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Chairwoman Keller?
Yes. That motion carries.
Moving on to item B, would the clerk please read that into the record? Thank you very much, gentlemen. We appreciate your time tonight. Item B, 2016-1004, a request by Washington Enterprises for approval of a development plan exemption for a building addition to Napa Auto Parts at 455 South Sandusky Street on 0.76 acres, zoned B3, Community Business District.
My, Mr.? The site's located east side of South Sandusky, south of Olentangie Avenue, zoned B3, has other properties to the east and south of the site. It's an aerial, there's an existing building, 5,500 square foot building, that's the Napa, the center. Just to the east of that is about a 6,500 square foot auto repair center. That building will be raised in this proposal, and what they were proposing is to build a 3,600 square foot addition just east of that. The, on this plan, the yellow's the existing building, and the green is the 3,600 square foot addition to the site. Engineering, they're reviewing the engineering plan that we speak. Access to the site from South Sandusky Street, there's an existing curb cut they've utilized. On Olentangie River, on that Olentangie Avenue, there's an existing curb cut, and they're proposing one just east of the existing curb cut. That's in the dark area. It's actually on the residential property to the east, which is owned by the owner of Napa, earlier zone commercial. Then they're going to, that would make it easier for them to maneuver their vehicles and trucks as frequent this location. And also, this, if and when the development to the east occurs, this would be the curb cut for that property. If it access, this development, the existing house, and if that house is ever raised and it's developed in the commercial, that would be the access point for that future commercial lot, potentially. Just staff recommend, because these are going to be two different parcels, staff recommend an easement agreement between the two properties if they're ever sold, just that they're able to access each other. The site itself, as I said, the green is the addition. Just in front of that, they add five more parking spaces for a total of 20 spaces for the entire development, per code 14 required on the site. There'd also be dumps just east of the addition. It would have to be screened with block walls to match the existing building and have wood doors. Also, the property to the east, or this property would have to achieve compliance with zoning code. So, that property line, the eastern property line, may have to be moved a little bit to the east to comply with minimum building setbacks for this site, and also, the site to the north would have to comply with zoning. The owner indicated that they would replat that for that to occur. From a design perspective, the elevation would match what's out there. It'd be a metal building with a split-faced block foundation on it, matches what's there today. Landscaping plan, Shade Tree actually reviewed this plan last week, and they approved four trees on Olentangie Road and two on South Sandusky Street, meet our requirements. No additional signage is proposed in this application, and they're not identifying any, no, any more light poles out here. Actually, there's none out here to begin with. Again, this is a development plan exemption, which is just reviewed by this commission. Staff recommend approval with 11 conditions. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
And ma'am, chair members of the commission, Bob, you know, Bob's had a plan on the books for a while. It expired and kind of unraveled the zoning then per the original approvals. He's owned this for a long time, and we were all hopeful that the larger retail, including Bob, the larger retail plan could come together to the south, but this is what he can afford to do and what he wants to do at this current time. Not saying that there might be, might not be future plans for the other property, but at this time, this is, this is what his business plan is and needs to achieve the best he can for his business. We're supportive of that. It doesn't amount to a very minor addition to this building. I think we all hoped that it would have been a bigger project, and it still might be at some point in the Happy to answer any questions. We do recommend approval.
Commission member questions?
Can you go back to the, is there any landscaping between the new addition and the residential homes, irregardless of who owns the property?
To the east?
Yes, along Olentangie.
I think there's a large tree.
And I guess the question is, why isn't there any screening between, why isn't there any screening going on between those two?
Well, I got to ask.
Whether it's fencing or mounding or anything along those lines. So, I mean, that, those properties are sitting right on top.
I got, sorry.
And there's nothing there to...
Right. One of our key considerations was to try to preserve that large tree. You see the shadow line in here, and I think Bob's prepared to do that. The other key consideration in this case is that he owns it for his property.
Right.
So, he'll be in control of whatever happens. Matter of fact, that all of this was supposed to be and is, could still be yet, part of a commercial development. While those are homes today, they are in commercial, commercially-zoned property, and obviously, he's adding to that commercial district at this time. So, the code doesn't require screening from commercial to commercial like that. If it had been somebody else, obviously, we would have talked to the neighbor and had him address it in some way if they had some sort of issue, but...
No sidewalk coming required along Olentangie?
No sidewalk required as of this project along Olentangie.
They just installed the one on the north side of the street.
Yeah, and it's actually a bike path connection.
Yeah.
To the Henry Street. It was a gap in our system. We advanced that with a grant, and the idea has been for a number of years, just due to grade, topography, and the fact that you literally run into a bridge abutment just a couple of houses down, to make that Henry Street, Sandusky Street connection with the bike path. It just so happens that we advanced that project before Bob was able to do his larger project. The original construct was that, when he had the larger project, there was a, there was a payment in lieu of doing anything on this side towards putting that bike path in. But as I said, we've advanced that, and the project is at 2,000 square feet now. It's the entire center.
Is there any changes to the current building, considering the frontage along Sandusky? Anything on the, on the building itself?
Literally, it's just a very small project.
Is the, is the lack of lighting in part to the hours of operation? I would assume this is probably a business that's open until maybe 5:30 or 6:00. Really, more of a question for the applicant.
That might be good to, Bob can address some of them.
Name and address for the record, please.
Robert, Washington, 10451 Rosecrans Road, Sunbury, Ohio. So, in regards to the lighting, on the side of the current building, there's two building lights that are on the building. One is not working currently. They both need upgraded to LED, so the new addition will have two lights on that. So, with M1 on the other side of church, or I'm not sure if they're manufactured or anything, there really won't be any light intruding on any type of residence. But once we light up the new addition and the current side, it'll have plenty of lighting for the parking lot itself without overdoing it. The front of the building has under canopy lights under the sidewalk. There's a slight overhang that covers the sidewalk, so...
Any other questions?
This is actually for the city regarding the staff recommendations. It says, "Any mechanical equipment on the roof shall be screened from public view." What mechanical equipment would that be?
Yeah, I guess if they proposed any, if it was HVAC equipment or the like, we want it screened.
Okay, so not car, nothing that would have to do with actually the work of the business?
Correct. It's a typical recommended condition we put in. We haven't seen building plans yet, but just to make sure if there are any rooftop units, like HVAC systems up there, that they're screened from view of the hall.
And we don't have anything planned. Our HVAC, the current air conditioning is appropriate for the size of the front retail area, which is not being expanded. It's just backroom storage, so it's going to require one-unit heater, and there's no, no items on the roof at all.
Any other questions?
Will there be any work done to the existing parking lot once the new is installed and any ceiling or?
Repaving. It'll have to be tore up. It's in, yeah, it's, it's in beyond repair. It's got to be tore up. So, at the same time, we'll repave that.
Okay. I think this is a good improvement to what you have today, so I like what I see.
Thank you. I agree. So, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
I'm assuming we have no one from the public. I didn't say anything on the last one. Okay. I can answer my own question, but I just figured I'd throw it out there. The commission ready to act on this item?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval for application 2016-1004, along with all staff recommendations.
Motion by Vice Chair Simpson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Halter. Roll call, please. Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Mansoris?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Ms. Tuckerbuck?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Chairwoman Keller?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item C, Stockdale Farms, if the clerk would please read items one and two into the record. Item one, 2016-0984, a request by LYH LLC for approval of an extension to the approved final development plan for Phase One of Stockdale Farm subdivision consisting of single, 60 single-family lots and 44.74 acres located at the northeast corner of Braun Miller and Pollock Roads and zoned R2 PMU, one family residential with a planned mixed-use overlay district. Item two, 2016-0985, a request by LYH LLC for approval of an extension to the approved final subdivision plat for Phase One of Stockdale Farm subdivision consisting of 60 single-family lots and 44.74 acres located at the northeast corner of Braun Miller and Pollock Roads and zoned R2 PMU, one family residential with a planned mixed-use overlay Mr. Affleck? Mr. Eflin?
I can do it. Why don't you just take it to the site plan? Madam Chair, members of the commission, this is straightforward, just extension of this particular subdivision. Obviously, there's been a number of extensions done in the past on two or three or four different versions of this plan through the years. It actually started before I got here, so I, we still, as staff, feel that this is a viable plan. It's a good plan. It's still exactly the plan the city council approved. It's just with some of the previous market conditions coming out of the recession, things have taken a little longer and obviously reaching this with utilities and upgrades to Brawmiller Road and other first-phase costs to any development, this may have a few more than your average farm field for first-phase development costs. The applicant has requested an extension. The only difference in our recommendation to the request by the applicant is the applicant requested a two-year extension. We're recommending a one-year extension per the direction we've received from city council and planning commission during the last round of extensions, which I can't recall. This may have been the last case that an extension happened on, but I think Terra Alta actually had one between this one. But the direction from city council was to bring forward recommendations for only one-year extensions at that time and deal with developments on a case-by-case basis for a longer extension. So, we recommend a one-year extension. Hopefully, this gets off the ground. They have done some engineering plans. They have more to do. And Terra Alta also seems like, just parenthetically, it's getting close to engineering plan approval in the first plat and working through their infrastructure items as well. Happy to answer any questions. Obviously, Steve Martin's here to, on behalf of the applicant.
Can I pick one nit?
Pick a nit.
Yeah.
Go for it.
This says a 60 unit, but there's only 52 in the plat. I don't know whether that's an issue or not, so I'll call, I'll pick a nit.
Now, it's a good nit to pick. Whatever the total number of units are in Phase One and Protection One, that's the extension request for the record.
Sorry about that.
That's a fine nit to pick. We probably pulled a template, but while you're talking and asking other questions, we'll try to run that one down.
Name and address for the record, please.
Steve Martin, I'm attorney. My office is at 50 North Sandusky Street, Delaware, Ohio. I'm here on behalf of LYH LLC. Like Dave, I have not been involved from the beginning on this. It's quite a history. I've only been involved probably for the last year or two years, along with Mike Shade regarding with topography issues, Brawmiller Road and a, and a number of things. Brawmiller Road is still an issue to be worked out. Big thing about this site is with things that have happened over the years, the infrastructure and the cost of development have gone up. This was originally started by Toll Brothers and they pulled out of the central Ohio market. And the issue that has come up is right now, you've got LYH, which is simply a landowner and developer. They are not a builder and it's become obvious that the cost, both onsite and offsite, and I've seen figures that they're talking about $2 million on offsite cost, that those are exceedingly difficult for a developer, particularly a developer that is not a builder and has the built-in profit of the building and the need for the blanks to absorb. As is mentioned in the letter that Mr. Ings, who couldn't be here tonight, sent in, the property is for sale. And because of the shortage of lots, there's significant interest and there have been several people, both two I've been involved with and they're both well-known and substantial developers. And one of them has had conversations with Mr. Eflin and the city manager regarding vehicles for financing some of the offsite improvements. So, there's essentially, there's a lot of things yet to be worked out. You know, and each time this plan is going through, density has dropped. So, we would like to have a two-year extension, but we understand what you've done in the past and I've been here for, to hear the Terra Nova. So, that's what we would like, an opportunity to get someone to develop this track of plan in accordance with the approved plans.
Dave, refresh my memory. Was it Stockdale where we said, "We'll do an extension, but we won't ever, ever, ever consider another one"?
That was.
Or was that, am I getting?
No, I think the one I can remember where, where we got to the, I think it was the 11th extension of that particular plan was Reflections on Cottage Pond out of Houck Road. Easy for me to say.
Wasn't there one, there was one, was it this one?
I thought that I saw that we, at first, offered way too many extensions. It seemed like not only were there extensions, but it was always changing somehow inside the development. The road wasn't going to be here, it's there, we're going to drop a number of houses, we're going to increase this, whatever it was, it always seemed to be going on. Bobby, you continue.
I was just trying to, I mean, I'm not saying that.
That part is true. The plan has changed a lot.
My concern is with this, and I understand your concern, Bob, this unbelievable amount of infrastructure off-site, that any other developer is going to be faced with that, as you enlighten you, okay? And I think what's going to happen is we can extend this thing and if somebody buys it, this whole thing's coming back again and there's going to be more changes to it.
They might.
Yeah. So, my feeling is almost, and, and I'm not real strong on it, but I'm kind of strong on it, okay, is it maybe the best off just let this whole thing just die? And then when the next developer comes in, he can commit a new plan. Or maybe that plan won't be as accessible, as likable as this one is, so maybe we should reject this one. But I think that any developer, and by right, has a right to commit to develop the property and make money out of it. And with two and whatever it is, million dollars, sitting there and just, what'd you say, offsite?
Offsite.
Just offsite. You know, that's a lot of money to spread out out of there, how many of them there. So, you know, and I've always been concerned about it just constantly. Nothing against developers, and I don't mean to make it sound like I do, okay? But they either buy or they get a whole piece of property and they come into a plan like this, but they are not normally built. So, now they're out there, they're built, okay? And then this goes on and on and on and on until I guess, you know, maybe we'll get developed, maybe we won't, I don't know. But I'm kind of, as you say, I'm kind of stuck between maybe the best off is let everything clerk's off out and let the next guy buy it, start with a clean slate? I don't know if he can commit and say, "I don't want this thing at all. I got a whole new idea."
Well, and anyone who might develop it could come in and propose something different. I mean, that's, you know, I can't not accept an application in that regard and we have, we'd have to process. You'd have to make a recommendation and council would have to decide. A couple of things I would say about this one is that I still believe in staff's estimation, this is the best of the series of plans that we've seen. It accounts for all the items that at least the city has brought forward to this point. You can't make it magically closer to infrastructure or any of those sorts of things. The land is where it is. But in the last series of reviews, we did take it from previous zoning conditions to a planned mixed-use overlay, which required quite a bit more than it ever had in terms of building materials and landscaping and that sort of thing that under the previous zoning, we didn't have. So, to have that continue to sit on the property and have someone develop it in that regard seems to me to be, to be perfectly fine and reasonable. Likewise, if someone came in with a, as you say, maybe there's a better plan out there and they want to propose it, they certainly would have the right, regardless of whether you let this expire or not. But the other difference in this case is that the applicant has pursued some approvals with respect to Phase One. They have sewer line plans with the engineers, sewer line, correct? They have worked on a lot of the offsite plans as well, so it isn't as if it had just sat there like Reflections on Cottage Pond, literally just sat there. There were no engineering plans, there were no follow-up plans, nothing, literally nothing happened. But the engineers and the rest of us, there have been a series of reviews and even some approvals on the offsite infrastructure plans in this regard. And of course, the county is also involved in this with respect to reviewing Brawmiller Road. It's a little bit different in some of our developments as well. So, for those reasons, we're comfortable, I'm comfortable with staff recommending to you a one-year extension per our typical policy and hopefully they get it off the ground. They can, they can, it is a hot housing market right now, so you know, the time seems ripe, even given the cost. And then in one year, we can certainly see where we are in a year.
In one year, you're going to, you know.
That's all I'm recording.
And I'm not, once again, I'm not trying to criticize.
Interesting.
We're going to come back to the same thing and say, "I think we are extending it for another year."
Or they could be under construction. We don't know that.
Here's the thing, what is the harm of them, let's just say that we extend it and then they ask for another extension. What's the harm to the city? Is there a harm to the city?
In extending it, there is none at this time, in my opinion. If we changed our comp plan or our zoning code or major plans in this area, then I might have a different opinion at that time. And I can't tell you, we're not going to do that in the next year. I can tell you, there's no plans for that. But for example, this is a good example where we had an unloaded Brawmiller Road to what had been planned for a bridge over the river. Those plans changed. Applicant came back with a zone change and a new plan that accounted for that. So, they did, now that was a few years ago, but they did do that. So, those, and that's a case where I'd say, "Don't extend it at that point in time. We need to redo the plan." Circumstances changed. Engineering plans in that case changed and really changed the layout of the subdivision.
So, I guess as far as I'm concerned, regardless of what we may have said in the past about, "Don't even ask me for an extension," or "I don't know if we ever said that," but what makes sense to me is to make the decision that makes sense right now. And if there's no harm to the city in extending this for another year, then I can't think of a reason why we would say no with a perfectly good plan sitting in front of us and circumstances that weren't really ideal for the developer on this particular site, given all that set of circumstances. I'll see what one year.
The worst case scenario is if they go away, someone else buys a lane and picks it up, they have to do this plan or come before you to ask for a zone change or a new plan at this point. Now, if we, again, if we change those policies and codes and plans, then that's, that's the reason to put a limit on, on the time for an extension.
And if we say, if we say no extension, then we don't know what the plan could be.
Well, and in a way, you put the applicant a little bit in a bind because if they get a person who, a developer, housing developer who's ready to go and the market timing is right, they can't go until they spend several months coming back effectively reauthorizing the plans that you've already approved. Now, you may, you may not reauthorize them at that point in time, but assuming nothing's changed, there have been no big changes or something like that, it certainly would cost them money. We have application fees, but probably the minimum is $2 million of offsite infrastructure. I know they are, but there is, you know, probably three or four months of process. So, I thought Steve seems like he wants to say something.
One thing I would like to point out is the amended preliminary development plan, final development plan for the Phase One were approved April 2015.
Correct.
And the reason you had to have an amended development plan, and I think you will confirm this, is there were topography issues that precluded the main entrance being off Pollock Road.
That's true.
So, basically, because of something out of the developer's control, things had to be redone, so you're only extending a plan from April 2015. I can't see any harm on it. Somebody could always purchase it and, but there's, there's no harm. This is a, a good plan, a fair amount. I mean, it is in a situation where an applicant got the amended preliminary development plan approved a year ago and has done nothing. I mean, there, there's been a lot of interaction with staff. You've also got the issue with the county and Brawmiller Road and entrances there. So, you've, you've got some things. I mean, sometimes on certain sites, things just take longer. I mean, and there are some engineering hurdles on this site. And, you know, it's, I haven't been, I've only been in a couple of the meetings, but I mean, because shouldn't be there. I mean, they're engineering issues. They're not, they're not legal issues or really zoning issues. They're engineering issues and they're being worked on. And from the aspect of somebody else coming in, one of the, for a builder, developer of beauty of this site is except for some engineering, it's shovel-ready. And if you come back in, if this expires and you come back in, not only you're throwing away several hundred thousand dollars of engineering that's been done, it's going to take a period of time. I mean, and right now, there's the demand for the lots and people who want to develop on this ground.
One thing, you said no harm. I totally agree with that, but I think the bottom line is if they've got this approved on hand, that increases the sellability.
Yes.
I mean, that's, that's the bottom line, isn't it?
Right.
Really? So, to me, it's, it's a no-brainer.
If it expires, we've got unzoned former farmland and that's totally different than zoned and at the final engineering stage and some of the final engineering done. I mean, that's, there is a world of difference. And right now, there's demand for lots to build houses.
That sounds to me as though that's what they're heavily pursuing is trying to, you know, in marketing to sell the property and this extension would definitely serve that purpose.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions for the lawyer for the developer?
I, you know, I don't have any questions, but I can tell you that just listening to the offsite development call, the buyer buys this thing, they're committed, there's going to be significant changes because you're just going to have to get somehow more houses or property in order for him or them or whoever to pick up that $2 million or whatever they end up needing at that time. I mean, I don't blame them, don't get me wrong, but I'm just saying that I don't believe what we're looking at here is what's going to be developed. Now, a lot of you have been here longer than I have, smarter than I am, but I'm just telling you that I would almost take and throw money on the table right now, pay is not going to happen. Extended it, I had no problem with that, but don't, let's not kill ourselves and say, "This is going to happen." Now, for that $2 million sitting over here, that is expensive that, you know, they're not going to eat it and lose money on this deal coming in. And it's all a matter, as we say in the bar business, assets and classes. Here is housing and property.
Absolutely.
I think the big difference is that this is a developer, not a home builder, and there's an opportunity for the developer, home builder to come in.
And he's going to make changes.
Well, he'll be able to spread out that expense through the pocket that will make building mountains.
He might propose that, but he certainly would have to come back for this by council.
I'm just saying, I don't want to scare ourselves and say, "This is what's going to happen." We may be close to this, but there will be changes. It's not happening.
So, my question on that same lines is, as you're talking to these developers they're interested in selling this to, is there a possibility that this property could be sold to multiple?
Highly unlikely. I mean, this is basically an integrated development. Maybe you can split off your, you're in essence the single family from the multi-family, but I mentioned that there had been conversations with, by at least one person, with Mr. Eflin and with the city manager. There are some. There are sometimes ways of spreading over a period of years, infrastructure costs when they get out of bounds.
Community authorities, are you?
There, well, there are a number of things, that community authority is one of them, the TIF is another, and those numbers and spreadsheets have already been run and one of them provided to the city. You know, hunting for a way to finance $2 million in off-site costs. And there are some ways.
And I don't think even, regardless of what those decisions are, I still, I don't see any reason not to move forward on this because all of those details will be worked out as you move forward.
Yes.
And as far as I'm concerned, and can move forward with.
Well, I think the reason I was asking is because if you end up with two, multiple developers, then if there are issues on the property, then you're dealing with multiple developers instead of where we're usually dealing with one applicant.
Yeah. If it's multiple developers, then the whole plan's scrapped anyway, it's gonna end up being two separate things.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, there are circumstances like Cheshire Crossing and Glen Ross where you have multiple home builders in there, if you mean multiple home builders as opposed to multiple site developers. Typically, if there are multiple home builders in, there's contractual obligations tip, and typically between those home builders as to that infrastructure, sometimes not. Ryan Holmes' model is simply to buy, develop lots, for example. They're one of the nation's largest home builders in Delaware now, so it's just a different business model. From my perspective, the zoning is still, zoning's unaffected by that, the requirements are unaffected by that. Any builder or developer would have to abide by these today and tomorrow, assuming you extend it and council extends it as well, at least for a year. Otherwise, they're, you know, just start the process over. And it's not necessarily a bad thing to have multiple builders in a large subdivision like this. In fact, I'd argue that there's, there's a lot of benefit to that because then you don't get the same model home repeated 70 times in a subdivision, that they build the model and they load it up and it looks nice and everyone walks in and says, well, I want one of those. And then you get a lot of one of those and it, it makes for a sort of a homogeneous neighborhood and difficult resales and stuff potentially through time. But it's better to have a little bit of a, of a mix.
If I could address Glen Ross, I had some involvement of one section of the reserve there and what was done there is two, who also do development, bought basically the raw land in the reserve and developed it, splitting the lots. That is sometimes done by builders slash developers. Part of the reason is they're spreading their risk, they're only have a half or a third. Then the other thing is they have more locations. I mean, it makes honestly a sense for a builder if they have a compatible builder. Now, sometimes price points, finishes aren't the same and you, but if you'll look over the, in the past, like you saw Tru Barry Homes and Bob Webb in subdivision and subdivision and that's what they're doing. I mean, and it's so you can have more subdivisions that you can offer your, your homes in, more school districts, and yet you're not putting all your eggs in one basket, if you will. You will probably have one developer. I look at it, I mean, you've got 245 single-family lots and 78 cluster homes. You may well have somebody, a different developer, builder on the cluster homes than you have on the single-family. But that's just conjecture, but it seems to happen a lot.
Okay. Thank you very much. Again, public comment, I see no member of the public that would be here to comment on this item, so I believe it's ready for commission action.
I just have one comment, just, just an opinion, because I still don't see the harm in this approval. I don't know what the harm would even be in going 18 months or even two years on it so that we don't get back here in just one year, because it won't take long to get that here here, just a.
I think you want to, I, I got the one year, it, it, once again, it's kind of what council decided they wanted to do and.
Oh, is that an actual, I didn't know.
Now, I don't know if it's a law we have to, but I, I just think that if, if council's kind of said, we'd like to stay with the one-year extensions, and I think we should go along with it. And, you know, so they are the ones who, who had the final decisions. It's just great to even get direction from them, tells which way they'd like to have us go, so that's my own.
Rookie mistake.
Harm and mistakes.
Well, with that said then, I'd like to make a, make a recommendation to approve case number 2016-0984 along with all staff recommendations.
Motion by Vice Chair Simpson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mantzoros. Roll call, please.
Mr. Badger.
Yes.
Mr. Holter.
Yes.
Mr. Mantzoros.
Yes.
Mr. Proll.
Yes.
Ms. Tuckerbuck.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simpson.
Yes.
Chairwoman Keller.
Yes. Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to approve application number 2016-0985 along with all staff recommendations.
Motion by Vice Chair Simpson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mantzoros. Roll call, please.
Mr. Badger.
Yes.
Mr. Holter.
Yes.
Mr. Mantzoros.
Yes.
Mr. Proll.
Yes.
Ms. Tuckerbuck.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simpson.
Yes.
Chairwoman Keller.
Yes. And that motion carries. Thank you. Good luck. Moving on to item D, would the clerk please read that into the record?
Item D, 2016-1011, a request by Medrock LLC for approval of a final subdivision plat from Millbrook Section 2, consisting of 40 single-family lots on 10.26 acre zone R3, one-family residential district located on Ridgefield Drive and Elliott Road.
Please, the presenter.
I am, this is chairman. This site is located north of Cobblestone Drive, south of Maristown Circle, east of South Hough Road. Zone R3. Some history of this, this goes back to the original Willowbrook's form development in the late 1990s. This was approved, which included developments as Adelaide Park, Brant King Commons and Millbrook. This Section 2 was actually approved in 2004 and with the recession, they never moved forward with it. And now they're coming back, need reapproval. But if, I think it was extended in 2008 and then it expired. The developer wants to build 40 single-family lots on the, just over 10-acre site. The engineering department's reviewing the plans as we speak. From the area, we can tell it's a flat site. There are a few trees on it, but not many along the boundaries, property lines. Traffic, access to the site from Cobblestone Drive, there'd be two curb cuts to this site, Elliott Road and Ridgewood Drive, and from Maristown Circle, there'd just be Elliott Road. The layout is fairly typical, double-loaded streets. Elliott Road would be your main connection point from Maristown Circle to Cobblestone Drive. The size of the lots would be between .178 acres to .235 acres. Your setbacks would be 25 foot for the front and 30 feet for the rear, which is typical for this district. The minimum house size, pretty approved plan in 2004 was a one-story would be 1,400 square feet minimum and a two-story would be 1,800 square feet minimum. All the houses would have to comply with our design standards in Chapter 1171-08. Parking, open space, there's a small open space on the extreme north-eastern corner of the site, which is next to an existing bike path that connects Carson Farms Park to South Hough Road. That area should be dedicated, should be maintained by the HOA, but dedicated to city for public use. The street tree plan was approved by Shade Tree Commission last week. If any trees are removed from this, from site construction, they'd have to achieve compliance with the tree preservation ordinance and the lighting plan would have to be approved by the chief building official. Staff recommends approval with eight conditions. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So I noticed on the color map, it lists the street as Minton Drive. You look on the development plan and it's Ridgefield Drive. You have to kind of cross-reference the, the aerial with the development plan. Does that sound right?
You're, you're correct with that. We'll check that to see what.
I would just think it would be Minton Drive until it, until it terminates in the Ellicott.
We'll check, we'll verify that.
Okay. Just something to look at.
In regards also to the streets, on the commission report, it referenced it as Elliott Drive, but on the zoning map, I think it says Ellie Cott, unless I'm looking at a completely wrong road, which is possible. But it says Ellie Cott, but then here it's, on there it says located on Ridgefield Drive and Elliott Road.
I think that's just a typo there.
So is it a typo on the planning? Ellie Cott is correct. Thank you.
Don't spell checker.
Anyone else have any questions? I have a few.
Not for staff.
Okay, so I live in this area. I live on Harmony Drive, for full disclosure, which is off Cobblestone, and Medrock is the developer for my neighborhood. Actually, the reason I'm sitting here in my seat was because of extreme dissatisfaction in my neighborhood with the way that things were happening with Medrock. I started having meetings in my house, just trying to get our homeowners association and things that have absolutely nothing to do with this. I'm telling you this so that you understand where I'm coming from as the commissioner and making some of the comments that I'm making. After I started meeting with some neighbors in my house, they said, you should run for council, and I did. So really, this is why I'm sitting here today, was because I got involved in some issues that were happening in my neighborhood. Those issues haven't gone away. I have, I went back through my emails and I found emails going all the way back to 2009, just, please mow the, the empty lot. Please take care of the landscaping. I mean, you all know how long all of these things have been going on. And so there's a, just a lot of, I think, concern with the way that this area has been seemingly forgotten by the developer. I bring up the area along Hough Road and I took some pictures, just because I think pictures kind of say it better than anything that I could tell you. I'll kind of take you on a walk. Okay, so this is the corner of 36 and Hough Road, so this would be kind of the gateway into this entire area. And there are dandelions, weeds where there should be mulch, the fence is in extreme disrepair. And this is what people who live in my neighborhood have been complaining to me about since 2008 and even before that. I've been on council since 2008. When I go out to walk the dog, when I, anything, people come say, I mean, when is something gonna be done about this? When will someone just take care of this area? We can kind of keep going through some of the pictures. The sign, I mean, is this what we, this is how we advertise in our, in our city for a neighborhood? This is the reverse side of the sign, so there's actually the, the piece of the sign that says, come live in Adelaide Park is on the ground. And it, it's not even readable and it looks like it's ready to tip over. This is a section, this, where, just beyond where this picture is, is where this new part of the neighborhood will be. And, you know, if you go take a walk, you're dealing with weeds and area that's not treated for weeds or mowed very often. How many times have we had to, you know, send citations, but please just mow this? Typically, I need to get the complaint, then I need to forward that complaint on, and there have been, I, I can't even tell you how many tall grass complaints over the years. So this is the west side of Hough Road that is, it's just been a mess since 2008. And when I talk about Hough Road landscaping, you all have heard me talk about it a hundred million times. And it actually looks better because there was some work done last year, but it still doesn't look anywhere comparable to what the east side of the road looks like with homeowners associations taking care of it. This is kind of, I tried to do a comparison, so the left side of this picture is what's being maintained by HOAs, and so there's mulch, there's treatment for weeds, and it looks pretty nice. But as you're driving down Hough Road, this one entire side of the street just looks like it's been forgotten about. And that's what people complain to me about. It's like, if one side of the street's going to look horrible, we might as well all save our money and not pay, because, you know, the, both sides of the street might as well look horrible. Why isn't someone making him take care of that side of the road? So this is one of the lands, it's supposed to have mulch in there and it's hard to tell where the grass stops and the weeds begin. And there's another one. So.
Very natural.
In full disclosure, when was this taken?
Today.
Okay. Know if it was this week.
Today.
Okay.
So it just doesn't look up to the standard, I think, that is reflective of our community or the area. And it's been a source of constant complaint for people who live near me. So we've, we've complained, we've written letters, we've, just don't know what else to do.
Is there any hope that since this will be developed and HOA will hopefully take it over, that you won't have to deal with this anymore?
What's interesting is this, this piece of property right here is owned by TNR Properties. Principal is Mr. Sabatino, and I'm hoping you can help us with some solutions to this tonight. Medrock is also owned by Mr. Sabatino as a principal, but they're two different companies. But because the same owner is principal, I'm assuming that's why the sign is on this piece of property and not, yeah, this is the, kind of the entrance to the area, but it's not the entrance to the subdivision, if that makes sense. So those are my issues, just trying to use this as an opportunity to come up with solutions that we've been searching for since 2008. And it's taken that long for this to come before me, so every other Medrock-type development that hasn't been in this area, I've separated this out and I haven't brought this up, but since this is the area that we're talking about, now is the opportunity for me to bring it up while we're talking about a development plan.
This is the first position to the developer in that same area.
Right.
And it, and it took this forum to actually initiate change.
So what I would be looking to do is try to come up with some sort of solution for sure moving forward to correct some of these issues. I mean, surely no one, this isn't the way that builder wants to advertise a neighborhood for sale either.
You know, I, I thought a couple of years ago, this problem's taken care of. We've got the trees replanted, they did some mulching, they did some weeds, okay? She's absolutely right, since that's been done, it has now just gone back to where it was before. Not as many dead trees, I don't think, I haven't counted a tree, but there don't seem to be as many, they seem to replace them. But it just, it, and, and David, we have talked about this, not only in this area, but other areas, that we just do not seem to be able to get on track with the developer until we really get nasty. And I just, I just wonder why we have to go through this? Why, why can't there be, you know, you contacted, the city has contacted, I don't know, but other people said, here's a problem, he take care of it. And that's it. You keep on, but doesn't get done till you're practically taking the court and screaming and yelling, or they have something come in and wants to be developed, and then all of a sudden, we bring the hammer down on them, which is where we're at again.
Well, I think Mr. Sabatino's gonna have to address these issues, but my opinion is that certainly you gotta, the landscaping needs to be kept up for the landscaping plan for Hough Road. We went through a corridor sweep last year and notified Medrock and the other HOAs, some of which are in control, Medrock, some of which are in their own control, and did get tree replacement and. And did get tree replacement and some regular mowings happening. But what I see is a fence that needs to be painted. I, Ron, I really don't see a reason for that sign at this point. I get the sign when it was a new area, it was just developing, and it seems to me that maybe it's time to just remove the sign at this point, and that problem goes away. But, you know, like, really, this is a chance maybe to turn it over and address the, the comments of the commission.
I think what's, what's tough for me is, as a council representative, for example, I got an email on July 1st of 2014. Okay, so that's almost two years ago. "Lisa, if the city has any leverage in getting the southwest corner of Houck Road and Williams Street cleaned up and maintained on a regular basis by its owner, I strongly encourage you to initiate that action. It will be rewarding to all the neighborhoods in the vicinity, and I'm sure appreciated by all the folks with a for-sale sign in their yard, and by the rest of us who hope for stronger home prices. Thank you. Your attention and response to this matter is greatly appreciated." So I write back and say, "Mr. Column, we're going to get this taken care of. We're working with the developer. I've been on this, I'm, we're going to get this taken care of." And then, you know, he says, "I hope it doesn't take till fall to get the grass and weeds down. Have a grand day." And here we sit two years later. And now what do I say to this person, who's a constituent of mine, that I represent? And I'm sitting in this seat now, and I have a moment to speak for him, and I'm still looking at this almost two years later. And I, I don't know what I can say to him, except for I've, I've said and done everything I possibly can to get this fixed. So can you help us?
Sure, let me start. My name is Ron Sabatino. And let me start by...
Can you give your address for the record? I'm sure we have it.
3895 Stone Ridge Lane, Dublin, Ohio. Let me start by making some comments that, that are intended to correct some misstatements and some incorrect statements that were made tonight. Let me start with the planning staff. I rarely disagree with, with the comments that are independently made from the planning staff. But just for a point of reference, you referred to the zoning of the parcel as being R3. I believe if you go back and look at the records, that you'll find that not to be a correct statement. This parcel is designated for residential housing. However, the zoning for that piece of land, as well as entire area, is a planned unit development.
That's correct. This was part of a larger planned unit development overlay from which the Houck Road landscaping plan comes and all that. So R3 is the base, but there's a planned unit development over top of that, too. So that, that's correct.
Moving on. The, just to correct some of the statements from the council member, Medrock is a partnership. We are the Med, and Rockford Homes is the Rock in Medrock. Med owns 38% of Medrock. And I'm here representing our partnership tonight. This is easily, we could have had the managing partner, Rockford, here tonight, but we take turns coming to these meetings. TNR Properties has few partnerships. This is, the ones that we still have are those from decades ago. And this is a partnership that we did decades ago with Rockford Homes. Most of the other things that you see is for in front of you. Delaware Golf Course, which I don't think anyone has an issue with the maintenance. See at Delaware Golf Course. We own 100%, but there are a couple of old partnerships, like this one, in which, you know, TNR Properties doesn't own a single piece of land there. TNR Properties owns 38% of, as tenants in common, I guess, as of all of the pieces of land. At any rate, let me move on. On the west side of Houck Road, Medrock owns none of some of that land. Some of the land on the west side, for, if someone wants to pass this on to your, you know, code enforcement folks, is owned by Dominion Homes. Some of it is owned by another apartment community that's there. Medrock does own this piece of sunscreen. The entire area is managed, or mismanaged, according to this photograph, by a company, what is it? Di is the, is the principal. And our contact person at the company is Jody Shockley, who manages the maintenance of all of the lands. I got a call today from the, not today, yesterday, from Rockford, who said that the city had called us. And I called Jody Shockley and said, "Why wasn't the grass cut yet?" Called, responded, the city, one of the ladies from the city called. And I said, "It should have already been cut." And apparently, they overlooked, and took this picture today, they, they cut some of the land again, but not this piece, which they should have cut as well. Nonetheless, on, the, the purchase orders, from what I understand, for the fence, for the fence to be painted, have been issued four months ago. Of course, they can't paint in when it's wet or cold. It's still wet. To paint wood, that's real wood, on the outside, has to be dry. But the purchase order to have the fence painted was, was issued three months ago. As far as the vacant lots, most of the vacant lots are owned either by Rockford, not owned, they're owned by Rockford or Westport. And so, again, for, if someone would share with the code officials, that, check out who the ownership is for, you know, to contact the right person to enforce code. We're a strong advocate of code enforcement. We think that the absence of that grass being, even though it's technically within the code requirements of less than eight inches or whatever your code requirements are, we think it's unacceptable, and we agree with you. There is, regarding the marketing sign, it's not a Medrock sign. It's a marketing sign, primarily now for the builders. I will speak to them. I think the, it's, it was approved by a permit. My guess is, that, my, my guess is they'll resist having it taken down, but certainly it should be restored. I wouldn't want to have, if we're building houses today, you know, that sign representing what we would build today.
What if you lived down the street from that sign when no one was building houses for eight years? I mean, that, it looked like that for a long time.
Sure, I mean, of course, every year, I would guess. So maybe a solution is this, and I'll be glad to tender this solution. Rockford Homes hired this company that David Di, who's a lawyer, operates, Joe Shockley runs most of the management, to manage the homeowners' associations and the extra unsold land. Typically, the homeowners' association management is turned over to the homeowners after 75% of dwellings are sold, because there's more lots to be built, not just these 40, but more, and that hasn't happened. For my developments, I readily turn it over earlier to any homeowners' association that is, that is willing, competent, and able to direct them, you know, fountain pond, uh, whatever they put in ponds, chemicals and stuff to ease the pond. I readily turn them over as soon as possible. We, we, when we do that, we generally retain the approval rights for the future homes to be built, but turn over all the other rights for the homeowners' association as rates to budgeting, collecting the dues, hiring the contractors to do the work at whatever standard they choose. And I'd be glad to present that to our partners if you believe that the neighborhood would be willing to take control, elect their own board, and run it yourself, and cut it as much as you want. By the way, if you looked at your most annual statement, the homeowners' associations have money. They have reserves. So it isn't, you know, like the guy before me was saying, where they don't have enough money to do things. You know, there, there's cash, excess cash and reserves to do, maybe more than you want.
But that, this homeowners doesn't control this land right here.
They don't control the land, but the same guy, the, the same company has a contract. One contract. Part of that contract is paid by, you have two homeowners' associations there now. Millbrook, Adelaide, and his contract is segregated for the amount of land for Millbrook, for Adelaide, the amount of ponds for Millbrook and Adelaide. And then the other land. So there's one contract with three checks coming in to pay the various pieces. Frankly, I think one contractor ought to do it all.
That would make sense. I mean, this is the piece that really looks terrible. Millbrook, the entrance, and Adelaide could use some sprucing up. There could be some flowers. It could look a lot prettier compared to the entrances of other neighborhoods. If I was a builder trying to sell lots, I would make the entrances look comparable. But this is really where the, the, most of the issue is, is at this corner and then down that side of the Houck Road. The spot that the homeowners is taking care of is better than it used to be. So this is really what the issue is here.
But there are two other property owners along the west side of Houck Road. Dominion Homes or...
I think, we're definitely aware of that. I know the councilwoman was aware of that, with our place in 10, with Dominion in their building now. I don't know if you've been down there lately.
I have.
They've put in a nice entry, they're, they're building. And so they put in a nice entryway, a sign, and they're keeping it up. It's a building site, but they're keeping it up as well. But we have had issues with that in the past, and we've noticed them as well. So I mean, what, we can certainly go through formal enforcement, really again, through the whole corridor. And I think, I think you should take Ron up on his offer to bring these issues forward to the bigger corporation, or whatever you want to call it. But I think the issue really is, for me, and it's just having to sort of go through the process every year of, is the grass cut? I mean, if it's on a contract, a master contract, we could all, I could look outside at my house and see when it's raining, and know when to get the mower out and, and mow the damn thing. And it seems like it shouldn't be that, that hard here. And that's my perspective from just code enforcement. Grass is one of those things, our standards of football, at that point, I really feel embarrassed for the person I have to give a notice to, across the city. And there's, there's hundreds of them.
I agree with you. And this doesn't meet the code violation, but it meets, it meets the standard of unacceptability.
It just looks bad with all the weeds in it, and then coupled with no mulch, and then the sign and the fence, and any one of those things by themselves might not be a terrible problem, but you put them all together, and it doesn't reflect well on the area.
Well, the angle lines, first off, and, and especially up there, that is a problem. I mean, you're, you're, I don't think you solve the problem, because there's, I'm thinking, western Houck Road, how many acres aren't developed? There's a lot of commercial property that's not developed, is that correct?
Um, I think about 12.
Well, 12 acres of weeds are blowing black over there. I, you know, you, you can't win the battle.
Well, how do they get it? They're winning the battle right on the other side of the street.
They're winning the battle slowly, but, yeah, I'm just telling you. I just, I think the big thing is, we have going here, and, and I agree with you, is it, and, and maybe I agree with you somewhat, too, is it, maybe, I'm still not sure, after listening to you, on that entrance going in, who's responsible? What entity is legally and financially responsible to mow and weed and paint and take care of and maintain that area going up there and going at least up to where the apartments are, is that the first thing? So who?
Medrock.
Medrock, and that's you.
Well, it's part me, yes.
When I, when I looked it up, the register...
Who is the person that we should be calling and say, "We're holding you responsible. Get it done."
Me.
Huh?
You can, you've told me.
You.
Me.
Okay. So, but you've been contacted about this before, is that correct?
That's correct.
And it hasn't gotten, so our question here, if I understand everybody right, trying to ease this thing out, is what do we have to do to finally get it taken care of? I know they couldn't paint the fence this spring, but if my memory is correct, and I live very close to it, and I go up there every morning, that fence didn't turn that way over the winter. Last summer, it should have been painted.
Probably.
And it wasn't painted.
I agree with you.
Okay? So you agree, and we agree, but the only problem is right now, it ain't getting done. It just has not been done and continue to be done. All we want to do is, have you take care of it, fix it, so that when, you know, the neighbors up there, or whatever, people coming into Delaware, look at that and see it's a nice-looking entrance. As most of our entrances into the projects we have in town, okay, whether it be on the south end, or the north end, or the east or the west, they seem to really take care of those entrances, because that's a, you know, I mean, it's very important to them. You know, and if people drive by and say, "Oh, yeah, that's gotta be a heck of a nice place. Look at that there," you know? But we don't have to.
I agree with you.
At least on one side. The other side's a lot better.
If I was trying to sell houses here, I'd be, I wouldn't accept that. I will, I will see, we've hired a contractor, a contractor who, we hired a management company who hired a contractor, and apparently is not adequately communicated for this year to his, the management company has not adequately communicated for this year, and they haven't serviced us yet. They've probably cut the grass on the other side a couple of times, I would guess, all right of this year. But they haven't, they've ignored this, we received notice earlier this week.
You know, because I say, it came because of rain, because I see contractors out there, commercial contractors, not homeowners, I don't want to cut the rain. But I see those commercial guys out there with the rain, because there'd be a pay-per-cut, and they would almost cut it in the snow if they had to.
Well, it's not, the grass, nothing's precluding the grass to be cut. And, you know, during this month, it'll be warm enough and dry enough that the fence can be painted, both of which are under contract from the management company.
And I've seen other beds in other areas that are bigger than this, and they're all mulched. They're done. Evidently, somebody's getting out there to do the job. Maybe we got the wrong, maybe you got the wrong landscaper working for you.
It's never been mulched, and since 2008, it's, it hasn't been mulched a single time.
TNR buys 1,000 yards of, 1,000 cubic yards of mulch every year. This year, we bought 1,200 cubic yards of mulch. And we have about half of it down. We hope to have all of it down by the end of May.
It's never hit this area.
We're not doing this, somebody else.
So we all agree it's not going to get done, but you're agreeing that it's going to get done quickly. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
So we can take you at your word?
You can take me at the word. I can't, I can't help you with the, I can't help you with the sign.
Well, we need to look at that sign, because that may have been in a lot of cases, Dave, those were temporary.
I, I believe that was a temporary sign, but I'll have, we'll have to go back and do some research.
That sign may be just about...
If it was truly, I don't know when temporary ended for that or not, or if we can even find that, but regardless, I have no problem sending a notice that it's time to take it down. And if they want to fight about that, then I guess that's something we can fight about. But, you know, tomorrow's another day, what can I tell you?
What Greg and Shay, something about, was this a, believe, verify?
Trust but verify.
So that's what we're going to do, is trust but verify. Now we know, because you're saying that you're responsible, and you're the guy who the phone number.
Yes.
And when Dave reports back to us, and it'll eventually get to city council, then at least, you know, if something else comes up that you want to have done, you might be running into a bit of a buzzsaw here.
Can't help you with the sign.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm, just with what you said, you are in charge of, which is the cutting, the mulching, the weeds, the painting of the fence, that is the stuff. The signs, we're going to have to find out whether it was a, because we, and this goes back when I was a young man, we should prove these things. Those signs were temporary. They were to, sometimes they were years, and sometimes they were percentages, but they were, they weren't allowed to be up there as permanent signs. They were to, sometimes they were years and sometimes they were percentages, but they weren't allowed to be up there as permanent signs.
The Buckin Stop here is the minority partner for Medrock, who has hired a management company to hire a contractor to do this.
All the way up Howe Road? Not all the way, but to Arthur Place or to where you're?
For all of the Medrock property.
I thought that was TNR property right here.
Okay, let me, let me repeat what I said earlier. TNR Properties doesn't own a single piece of ground here.
How come there's signs that say if you want to build here, call TNR Properties?
We're also a real estate broker. Those are, those are signs for sale.
So this is Medrock?
This is Medrock.
Oh, that makes it easier then, because Medrock's the one asking for the neighborhood.
And this would go, this would go down the frontage on 36 as well?
Yes. Medrock owns it all.
So I think, I think some of the landscaping issues turned the corner there on 36 Van Houten. Is that correct?
Didn't I say that earlier? That Medrock owned all of this. TNR doesn't own anything here.
So, so we can add a condition to Medrock's plan that the landscaping plan for this area needs to be complied with before, we can do it before a housing permit is issued, we can do it before an approval for the neighborhood is issued, we can-
Our next step is council. How about before the next, whatever the next hearing is?
Would that be the council on Monday?
Yeah, the council's Monday.
Monday.
Give a whole lot of time.
Yeah, that is a whole lot of time. I, I do, I mean, I, if you want to do something like that, I think we have, would not be inconsistent to have a condition that's tied to before the first housing permit is issued.
We have done that before on a housing permit.
It's inconsistent with previous approvals and there's still some issues.
I think you have to do it sooner than that. I mean, there's, there's a plug sooner than that.
We're, we're gonna, I, believe me, we're gonna follow up on a code enforcement sooner than that. And hopefully Ron will follow up tomorrow.
I would put like a 68 window on this.
It might be Monday.
It might be Monday.
I personally would say if you're six, eight years down the road, that putting a housing permit condition on here would not be enough for me. I would put a day's limit on there where you, whether you want to say 60 days or 90 days or something like that. But I would not go to housing permit. Because quite honestly, just to develop for this particular piece, section two, these 40 homes, you're going to be, you know, a couple of months out before you can even get-
Don't, don't get me wrong, I mean, you can put whatever condition you want on it. I can give you my recommendation. I certainly don't stop you doing that, but we're going to follow up regardless on the code enforcement. To me, what I know motivates builders is a building permit. So if they come in for a building permit and I say, I'm not giving you a building permit until you do A, B, and C, that seems to prove to be pretty motivational. Now, that doesn't preclude the fact that we're going to go tomorrow or the next day and say, fence, sign, landscaping, and it sounds like Ron's going to do the same thing on his end as well.
Mulch, mulch.
Mulch.
And while I have it here, flowers at the entrance would be great. That would be like the cherry on top. Just, I don't even care what color.
Why don't you talk to neighbors?
Little victories, little victories.
Feel free to talk to your neighbors and I'll talk to Rockford. As far as I'm concerned, my vote is, you know, for 38 of 100 votes, yeah. But you guys do it all and hire your own contractor if you want.
The problem is that we only have a few, like three streets and then a ton of empty land. I don't know how that would, I don't know how that would work.
That would increase your HOA fees.
Yeah.
Again, it's kind of, you gotta look at what your HOA, that's true probably for Adelaide. It's not true so much for Millbrook. Battington's under their own. The condos have been doing it for themselves for a while. Arthur Place been doing it for themselves. Hetherton will do it for them. So you gotta kind of, Adelaide doesn't, probably has the least amount of homes in that, in that mix, I think. In terms of what they were, you know, the final build-out scenario.
Every other builder in this area is throwing up house after house after house after house. I feel like this company is missing this opportunity because of how badly it looks.
Well-
Well, plus the absence of lots. There's no lots anymore there.
We got an owner, successful. We've only kind of discussed about the time limit on it, whether we should go tie it to the first building permit or 30 or 60 days. He says he's going to have it done before then. So it really doesn't make a lot of difference. Okay? If we say it needs to be done for 30 days and that no building permits will be allowed until it is done, we have them on both sides of the fence and we're ready to move on.
Absolutely.
That's satisfactory.
He is, I gotta take him at his word. I mean, I have a little bit of trust here, a little bit of faith. Here we have it, but he's not going to build a house, someone's not going to build any houses until it's done. And believe me, I'm sure they want to build houses on that street now in a big hurry to wait this month to throw it in.
If we put a timeframe in, I would suggest 30 over 60 only because I worry that that contractor that they have, when we hit 60 into the summer, they're going to say, well, the grass is too brown and we can't mow and there'll be, there'll be other excuses.
I like 30 days.
So I think 30 is-
I like 30 days.
Also attached, there'll be no building permits until it's done. So we have them-
On both sides.
On both sides, okay? Because they've spent money to put this thing together and that property is one they're looking at. It's shovel ready. If there was one piece of property shovel ready, that won't take much to get that thing going. So, if you want me to make, unless you've got something you want to add?
I like 30 days.
Okay. I would like to add as to one of the uh, conditions. And we've been through this before. We will not have to vote on the conditions separately. We'll just add the conditions before we vote. One of the conditions that we're going to add, as soon as I find it here, and I gave a little, that's because I'm working totally on the wrong thing. Okay? Okay, so we have seven, we have eight, we're going to add-
Nine.
Nine. And if anyone wants to change someone's wording, they're more than welcome to, believe me. Number nine should read that within 30 days all of the mowing and landscaping, including weeding and mulching, and we'll put in painting of the fence. That might be a problem, the kind of thing we've had lately, but we'll throw it in there, okay? Shall be done on the Medrock property located on the west side of Howe Road and extending west on William Street.
Is that about the east side?
West side.
West side.
West side away.
The west side, not the west side. Believe me. Standing one is east.
I tried extending on the west side away. Yeah, that's right.
Shall be completed. But no housing permits on the Medrock final subdivision plat 2016-1011 will be issued until said work is completed and inspected by the city. Some places in there are not only installed but maintained. Because we get it installed, but we don't get it maintained. They did install some mulch up there two years ago, is that right, Lisa? Year ago?
This part-
This being up, but going up there, they did some, but then it wasn't ever maintained.
It's out on Howe.
You got my house.
They did trees, but I don't think there was, I don't know.
They had to replace the trees that were broken, torn on both sides. You guys had yours done first, yours later. But they did mulch and they did weed, and then nothing was done again in another two years. So I think we have them. That's what I propose. Anybody want to change the wording on that? Dave, what do you think?
I think a clear wording as far as I'm concerned.
And then the sign you can handle through other-
The sign is-
The sign we got to do a little research on, but regardless.
I think it's legal, but probably needs repair.
And I'm going to push for removal, so we'll see what happens.
Okay, Dave.
All right. Now that that is done, I am going, please don't ask me to repeat that.
No, I think that was pretty good.
You got off by the hairline.
Wait, wait, will you read it? Just in case we, I know what we're agreeing to, but just in case it needs edits.
Go ahead, read it. I dare you.
Mr. Halter motioned to add as condition nine to 2016-1011, which I added. That within 30 days, all of the mowing, landscaping, including the weeding and mulching, painting of the fence shall be installed and maintained on Medrock property located on the west side of Howe Road and extending west on William Street, shall be completed but, or no housing permits on Medrock final subdivision plat 2016-1011 until said work is completed and issued by the, or inspected by the city.
More things, I'm going right here.
It's fair.
I'm done.
I'm just lost.
It's fair. It's just the wording I think is kind of confusing.
I do.
It's fine to that piece.
I thought, I thought it was very, very good.
Can we just call it?
I want a second to motion.
Okay.
I haven't made a motion yet, you know?
You did, you just did.
I haven't made a motion on, on that particular-
Sorry, I'm getting excited.
If somebody clarified for me where this is, we're talking, I hear Williams.
Go back.
That's not, that's not where the subdivision is.
That's what's- No, 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 no. This is on the corner.
Oh, 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 I just-
You know where Halk and William is?
Yeah.
Okay. On one side you have the acre and, and foot docked.
Okay.
That's on the east side. This is on the west side. Now he, you're looking at-
So it's not connected to the neighborhood?
It is not connected, but it's owned by the same people.
It's all the same.
I got you, I got you. I know where we are now.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I got you.
All right.
My apologies again.
Oh, no, 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 no. It can, it can get-
We've been thinking about this product for four years, so that's why we're all like, yeah, we know what we're talking about.
Well, it's, it's a big mash plant development.
It's been, yeah, it's been a long time. Okay.
So you added nine, so now you need a, a motion with?
Now I'm going to make a motion that we approved 2016-1011 along with all of staff's comments and recommendations, including the addition of the condition of number nine.
Motion by Mr. Halter, second by Mr. Badger. Roll call, please. Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Mansoris?
Yes.
Mr. Prawl?
Yes.
Ms. Tuckerbuck?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Chairwoman Keller?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Saffino. Appreciate it.
Sorry, I forgot I'm supposed to still be running the meeting. I'm so excited. You took my agenda.
No, I gave it back to you. Sorry, this is what you gave me. I just gave it back to you.
Thank you. Moving on to item four. Planning directors report.
Ay, ay, ay. Make it good, Dave, make it good. All right, well, the hour's a little bit later than I anticipated giving the agenda, but that's okay. We're still going to do this this evening if you can hang in for several more minutes. Joe Rose is here. Joe, come on up. Come on up to the hot seat. Joe Rose has been our intern for a little over a year now and firstly, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank council for the budget approval that allowed us to have a paid intern. Joe is a Delaware native, has attended Ohio State and has pursued, pursuing a GIS advanced degree through Columbus State as well. So, want to just let him have an opportunity to show you a piece of his work that we've given to you. You have the maps out already and we've sent it to you electronically. Like, we've been talking about this for a while. We haven't had an opportunity to update this since 2009 because I have to send out landscaping notices to cut your grass every foot and all that kind of stuff constantly. And hopefully you've addressed some of that here tonight. But Joe's done, this is really complicated technical work and I don't think, you can't really appreciate that unless you hear someone talk about the process of going through this. Then we can talk a little bit about the results if you want, although I think those are a little more self-explanatory. So we have a couple of slides to show you what it looks like in a background to produce a nice map and sort of photo charts of grass, which is a lot more than that as well. So general floor is yours. And just for the record, appreciate your hard work on all the projects you do, but particularly this.
Well, thanks, Dave. Appreciate that. Uh, yeah, so the housing pipeline, like Dave said, this is something that hasn't been updated since 2009. Going back seven years, well, I guess it would be six years when we started it, going back six years to find out just where we stood as far as housing units go in the actual city, plus new proposed developments, developments that have changed over the course of time, whether it be boundaries, total unit numbers. It took a lot of work just getting those numbers finalized and then going back through reports, dating back to as far back as 1999 to find out how much has changed in that course of time. You know, things like what we were talking about in the Medrock areas, you know, all those developments and how much they have progressed over time and things with Hetherton and Howe, you know, going from Laner Woods to, you know, what it is now. Took a lot of work going back to see how much has changed really. So I mean, and this is a project that now we have City Works, has made it a lot easier when you go back and try to find permits for, you know, different subdivisions where, where they've been issued. A lot of it has come from using aerials over the years to see, you know, what's been built out to make it easier to identify what's done and what's not. And, you know, this is the finished product and hopefully it's something that can be updated, you know, on a monthly basis. But, you know, this is just kind of, you know, this is the GIS. This is all the layer files that you're looking at constantly and, you know, things get broken, they have to be repaired, especially something that isn't updated in seven years. Things go missing.
GIS is the mapping software, geographic information system. So to produce the pretty map requires a whole bunch of layers of information and cuts of data and then brought back in together. This is just one page, but you could see, you have to, and this is part of what Joe's degree is in. And Lance and I know enough, probably at this point, we, we used to be experts, now fumble through this software package as well, but it, it's complicated. Maureen Grunner is our GIS coordinator for the city, provides a lot of expertise for, for all of us in this regard too. But you just, I want to show you a screenshot of kind of what it looks like just to make the map.
Yeah, that's a lot of that right there and constantly go through, you know, however many subdivisions and whole layers of numbers upon numbers upon numbers inside of those layers to try to update those from seven years in the past. It takes a lot of time, but, you know, it's a process and as it, you get closer to being more finished, it could be something that's updated more frequently. It doesn't take as long. But, and this is, this is the, I guess, the other finished product. The more, you know, going down Excel, looking at the numbers, the other thing, it helps you see where everything at, but this is the actual, you know, hard data right in front of your face. This is where you, we kind of, you, as you update it, this is where you find your numbers that you can go back into GIS and update it manually because this is more, with the Excel, it kind of updates itself as far as population projections and, you know, going off a census data and things like that. But the actual map done manually, so looking at all these numbers and then going back in and filling them out by hand on GIS is essentially how that stays updated. And, you know, this is, you know, it's still a work in progress, you know, with each month, but, you know, it's, it's getting there.
So we have each subdivision then by the subdivision section. As we issue permits then, what we used to do and our hope, what our intention is to do on a monthly basis, as Joe notes, is to keep those numbers of units completed by subdivision section up to date. In the, in the Excel file that he references, there are formulas and calculations, as you have in Excel tables, that we used to use to produce our population projections. It would all roll up into a population projection starting with 2000. As we went to 2010, our population projection was almost right on the money, which is partially scale and hard work and partially luck when you do a US census. But from that point forward, we do a different, we pursue a different way of the population- that point forward, we do a different, we pursue a different way of the population projections that I give, of course, Morpsy has their own, the Census has their own, we do ours off of building permits, and we keep them separate from this to just kind of separate the two data sources a little bit, you can see how many, this, this is a print of just part of the Excel table, and there's eight pages of 60-odd active developments, more than that, residential only in the city, um, so for staff of 10, half of whom are just, are the inspection staff, that's a lot of data to handle, uh, on a monthly basis.
So, really quick, since you brought it up, so since, first of all, I think this is amazing, I think this is great work, and I think that it will help people on the planning commission going forward, but since Joe, I realize one day will no longer be an intern for the city, um, what is the?
Maybe he'll wait a little.
That would be great, too.
Full time.
What is the, who within the city will be assigned to ensure that this is updated regularly?
Well, it'll be the same problem as 2009, it's going to essentially fall back to me or Lance or perhaps Diane in the planning staff to keep it up to date.
I'm also working on a process to make that easier next time, in case that's happened.
And, and we have done that with a lot of the automation, we fixed all the formulas and, um, cut loose some of the data that we thought was really important, that as we look at it now isn't as important, so that there's no need in spending time keeping that up to date when we can just focus on the important, you know, how many unbuilt units are there, what population do we essentially project to have built out, uh, probably not keep up to date as much on some of the concept-type plans, because concepts come and go, and that really creates a lot of burden, uh, but as we get to preliminaries and finals, then we're, you know, we're building, and that really is in the pipeline at that point. There are some concepts included in here, but we've really tried to cut those down, and one of the big differences from 2009 is that, um, several of the concept plans, most of them have progressed to, to construction as well, so they're no longer concepts.
I tell you what, I, I, I think of all the things that, that we've been given to use as tool, uh, this map, it was even nice, I mean, I know about where these places are at, I just can't tell you exactly where they're at, and even when we got this package that was in there, I could open that map up and say, oh, here's this as compared to this area, especially the southern area, okay, that, where that fits in, uh, it just, I tell you, it, it's been a long time coming, and I want to thank you and staff for, for getting this out, because I think not only for, for us, but future planning people, uh, on the commission are going to find it to be something they're going to live with, I know I've got mine at home and, you know, safely put away, so every time I get a package, I can break it out and find out exactly where that piece of property is in correspondence to something else that has either been zoned, hasn't been zoned, whatever it is, so, thank you, it, it means a lot to us, at least to me, because I'm not the brightest bulb in the bunch.
Well, that's what it's there for, so.
Oh, we appreciate that, just quickly on the, on the four charts of grass, I think we're a city of 38, 39,000, depending on whether you look at the high side or the low side, and if we build out the entire pipeline as it sits today, and obviously the pipeline changes through the year, um, we're getting, we will build out to close to a city of 50,000 people at our kind of historic rate, throwing out the real low years and the real high years, but it's sort of a historic average building rate, that probably is a pipeline that builds out over 10 to 20 years. If you look just right now at how hot the housing market is, that's a little bit less, but of course, a few years ago, that would have been 20, 30, sorry, uh, you know, 10 to 20 is a, is a comfortable, um, projection, I think, to build out another 10,000 people, which is, uh, significant on a base of 38,000, but we are no longer, I've said this for a while, we are no longer, although there are many respects of Delaware that make it a great sort of small-town feel and small hometown feeling town, but we are no longer a small town, we are a full-on medium-sized city and heading to, to a larger medium-sized city, uh, with just the pipeline that's in place today. We have some land in the city that's, you know, kind of in the Bevins property on 36, 37, that's, um, in the city but hadn't done anything yet, uh, who knows what it's going to be, but that would add to, to the pipeline at this point, and the pipeline only incorporates, uh, property that is within the current municipal boundaries of the city as well. We could do projections and fill in different parts outside the city, uh, if we're asked to do that, too, just so you know exactly what the pipeline constitutes for us. I guess really all we want to share with you on that project tonight, plus something else, Joe.
Great job.
Good job.
Thank you.
Very helpful.
Now, when you do your, your populations, usually have like a, a growth rate on the low end and the high end, right?
I do.
And are you able to do that at a subdivision level, or are you still just doing that on a citywide level, because you normally say, either school districts are asking for the same type of information data on a low and a high?
Correct.
And since we've got multiple school districts, are you able to kind of choose the, either that way?
It's a great question, and there's really, to my mind, two questions in there, um, or at least two answers, so, we do the population projection based on a household size, high and low, citywide, and that comes from the census, that really is the best source for that, and it's 2.47, went up just a hair in 2010 over 2000, pretty consistent, that's, that's not an inconsistent number for a household, and, and you have the, we can go into definitions of these, but for a family size, then it's a little over three, so that's just the difference between the low and the high side, and we do it citywide, we're comfortable with that for a population protection, it's really what, what we do, we, um, we really would never do that on subdivision basis, this can't get down to a level of detail. Now, the other answer to the question really is, how do the schools do this? The schools are much more sophisticated and better at breaking down literally each household, apartments, condos, by top, by different types, that's their business, they're going to, you know, a house generates a kid, it's a kid they got to educate, it's a teacher they got to pick, so they're, that's their business, so we let, we can give them this kind of information, we've given it to them in the past, and they can use that to do their own projections of household size, they use different ones, used to be Delaware and Olentangie had a slightly different calculation that they used for the average number of kids coming out of an apartment, one was 2.2 and one was a little higher than that, right, of a kid coming out of an apartment, it's a 2.2 of a kid, but it all adds up, so, what we can do is take this data now, because it's in GIS, it's in, it's in mapping with data behind it, and we can say, um, we actually have a different, um, Excel worksheet behind here as well now, that we've created as part of this process, for just Olentangie schools, we take out the subdivisions that are in Olentangie schools, and we can give that to Olentangie, obviously, everything else is Delaware schools then, and we can give that to Delaware, and they can do their forecasting from there, which they've done, these numbers haven't appreciably changed from the numbers of total potential build-out units, uh, from what all the schools have gotten up to this point. If anything, they've gone down just a bit as some density has come out of the subdivisions in the southeast area and, and other subdivisions, densities come down just a bit. Through the approval processes that you all. Answer your question?
Yes.
That all?
I, I have another fairly big piece here for you tonight, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
But since we're all here, let's, let's just do it, um, so, there's a big hairy flowchart off the screen, which I'm sure makes you really happy at nine o'clock or wherever we're sitting right now, and, but, this is essentially the engineering, and it includes some planning level reviews as well, I don't know if you can see this, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter for purposes of the discussion I want to have with you, uh, but we've been having some conversations with the development community relative to when do we allow, uh, what is our process, what don't you like about our process, what do you like about a process, if anything, uh, the value judgments of whether we, that bothers us or not is, is a different question, but, uh, so this is pretty much a flowchart of the steps of a process, you can think of it in terms of a subdivision, but it's a development plan review as well. The very bottom of the screen, you, you have all the pre-development that you all are involved in, and you go through concepts to preliminary, you don't have to do concept preliminary to final, you go through the steps, you go through engineering reviews, and you go through city council and what have you, and actually, not every sub steps in here, but these are the big ones, you get to the bottom of this page, and it's really the engineering plan approval on, for instance, the final subdivision section, like we had to see, so then the engineering plans have to be completed, reviewed, and approved. The box on the bottom then has, the development plan approvals are in place, so council's approved it, engineers have approved their plans, the engineering fees have been paid, there are fees to review your plans and do that sort of thing, and to set up for inspection of construction, and there's a construction estimate submitted. Typically, at this point then, everything on the left in yellow starts the, uh, infrastructure construction on a section of subdivision to, to keep with the example, and that progresses to, hey, we have a pre-construction meeting, we have the project, um, construct, the project is constructed, um, there's a punch-out list typically of things that still need to get done, inspectors do their, do their thing, um, then the infrastructure's put in for that section, the developer submits a, a maintenance bond, estimate and a bond, that's, that's eventually accepted by engineering and confirmed by then, inspection fees again are paid for the inspection on the construction, and then that would move to acceptance of public, of the public improvements by city council. After that, action happens by city council, and you do this kind of perfunctorily, but you do it regularly, um, the developer can come in, we can apply signatures to the final plat, did that before, and the plat can then be recorded, and homes can then, permits can be pulled for those homes, that's the basic process of, again, using subdivision, commercials a little, little bit different, but similar, um, in some ways, not as complicated, because it's just usually one project. So we've had some conversations with the development community, and I just wanted to get your input and impressions to either consider changing our process or reinforcing this, what we do. There are some that would read our subdivision code to allow you to bond all the public improvements, not construct any of them, you can do this under county code, and, you know, higher revised code in counties, we're home rule municipality, so we write our own rules like every other home rule municipality does, and ours is very similar, really, but that would allow you to bond the construction of these improvements, take your final plat and go record it at that point, which lets you go sell lots, but it's still a farm field sitting out there, there's no road, no sewer line, no water line, uh, you know, you're not even to a, hey, can we start a little early because we're down to a punch-out list here? So, we have done early starts, where it's, hey, can we start a little early building homes because we're down to a punch-out, we still got to put light bulbs in the lights, and we still got to, you know, do a few APs running behind and, and energizing them, that sort of thing. They typically require an early start agreement that's signed, has gone to council, some of them haven't, that's signed by the city manager, lets you get an early start. I, I would advocate, and I would read our code to say, this is the process, and there's good logic to the process that we've been following, I'm not particularly a fan of saying, well, you can just bond all your public improvements, so you can go file your plat, sell lots to somebody, we've, we've gotten complaints in the southeast, um, even without having them bonded, just lots that actually aren't lots created yet being sold by contract, which we, we can't stop a developer and someone who wants to buy a lot by contract from doing that, but what happens is then if something goes wrong, and the market turns down, or construction takes a little longer, or whatever the case may be.
Developer leaves.
Developer leaves. All of a sudden, especially in a hot housing market, and it's exacerbated now, you sold your home like that, and now you're in an apartment for a lot longer, if you can find one, than you thought you were going to be, and that can create all sorts of private squabbles between the developer and owner, but what ends up happening in the real world is that everybody gets mad at the city, and says, the city took too long and they haven't approved this, and we have literally fielded, all of us here on staff, a lot of calls in that regard, and frankly, it irritates us, it really makes me mad to know, and we, we hear from a future citizen that the city has held this back, and we say, well, that's funny, because this has been approved for a year for a developer, all they have to do is actually go build the infrastructure, so if you want to get mad at somebody, you, you need to go back to that builder, I'm, I'm sorry, I feel your pain, I understand your plight, but there's not a lot I can do there. The other danger here is if we take a bond, developer goes bust or goes off into the sunset, theoretically, that bond is there so that we pull the bond and we go put in the infrastructure in the subdivision and we become developer. Now, cities do a lot of things well, but that's not one, in my opinion, my opinion. So, the other thing is, the bond we got in year A is worth year A. Now, we, we tend to look out there, and we have contingencies and stuff, but year, that year then, pulling the bond might be year M with year A dollars. And people that are mad and have a contract and want a lot and want to build, have somebody to build a home, really, all we do is build the infrastructure and then go find a, try to find a developer or build a home or something, that, to me, it gets a little weird, so, there's been a conundrum over one word in one section of a lengthy connect-the-dots subdivision code that says, it's the word "all" in public improvements, and my reaction to that is, no problem, if you can't read the entire section together, which I, I don't know if I can, can't, you, you should be able to read them all together, because there's a lot of other words that say other things, too, no problem, we'll bring a code change forward to city council, just remove the word "all," clear it up for you, uh, we could do it that way, or we could simply be consistent with our process, so I, I just kind of want to get your feedback on that, you obviously know where I stand with respect to this, um, I think there is a middle ground there to work with the builders on, to say, maybe we can formalize an administrative process for early start agreements, and say, at a point of major infrastructure completion, roads, water lines, sewer line, maybe we can update the code if that's what we have to do, or formalize the early start agreement to say, yeah, we have no problem, at this point, you're, you're in it, you know, and the basic infrastructure is complete, we have no problem getting a house started, we're not going to let you occupy it up until the other stuff is done, that's typically what are early start agreements, um, so, I throw all that out at you, but I, since we had the graphic, I'll just point it out clearly, so what we do is, here is where you can record a plat, here is where they want to record a plat off of, you know, against a bond. And theoretically, I can easily read the code, so you can give me a bond all day long, but there's nothing in that section so that you can go record a plat, so I guess you could sue me on my determination in that regard, or pay me the board thing, go with the company. Yeah, I'm not quite sure why there's a lot of confusion on it, except I do understand the motivation from a builder, has a lot of buyers out there now, they want a lot of records so they can sell that lot of records, I totally get that, I have no problem with that, it's basic economics and, and house building, I just think it's, the lot and the infrastructure have to be at a point that makes sense for our community, long, medium and lo, short, medium and long, that's kind of my position, I really wanted to get a sounding board in a, in a field from you as well, because, uh, maybe you and Capel have a different direction, and if you do that, that's fine.
Anyone who disagrees with Dave, three here.
I don't disagree with Dave, but I would, I do have one thought, and it's coming from the way works, also works for the government and knows all about local role, um, I completely support the, um, reemphasizing in the administrative process what that process is, just so that they all receive the same thing and they have a better idea of what punch-outs would allow them to start earlier.
That's a good comment.
However, changing code to emphasize specific points, I would disagree with, because over time, you might need to change those again, and once you, you know, you start editing, you know, tweaking the code just to, to appease certain individuals here, and you end up in a cycle.
The provisions to review these on case by case, because there are some developer slash builders who do make that commitment, is that right?
And that's a good point, I think, that's why I proffer that there's a middle ground that we have used administratively, to your point, um, really that early start agreement. Now, the early start agreements, making them formal, take, you know, a document and, and time to go through, and they, they, they don't just happen overnight, from time to money to developer, and I completely get that, and I completely respect that, uh, that's their business. I completely get that, and I completely respect that. That's their business. But this is a way to protect us, too, as a city, and do an early start agreement. If it takes a month, it takes a month to get that document together. One thing we could entertain is more formalizing this process that we've used literally less than a handful of times in the last few years. It's maybe been three, maybe four.
So, it's available.
So, we've made that, you know, you won't find early start agreement in the code, but to Mr. Tucker Buck's point, we've made that available to still meet the code, protect our own interests as a city, and allow a developer to move forward. There might be a way to formalize this, so this can just happen even faster at the staff level. Basically, most of all the items happen at the staff level. I don't think council's ever gone, well, item two of the early start agreement has a, you know, a six-inch drop to a manhole, and it should be eight. You could do that, but I don't think they've ever done that. And you may not want to have your agenda bogged down with that kind of stuff.
Is that the only piece of this process that's not part of this mapping document?
Oh, no.
Okay. Because I was just wondering if after the punch-out, if you had a, something in the actual process that said, and this is, if applicable, start, you know, start early start agreement would be applicable.
We'd have to, we'd have to put that in here probably near the bottom of the page. This is mostly engineering steps. This is not planning steps. This is not all of the pre-development steps that you all know and love and deal with every day. And this stops, this does not include any of the building permit and inspection steps. So, it's just construction's a complicated thing. And it is a step-by-step process, though, and some of them overlap. And we, we go out of our way here as a city, honestly. Cincinnati would never do this. I mean, they would never do this. But we go out of our way here to really facilitate development. I think sometimes people forget that. Engineering, it is constantly working with developers to sort of, as Jen likes to say, push the envelope a little bit. You're not completely done. There is a punch-out list. Is this item a little more punch-out or a little more, you know, big? Bob's lab, because he's been okay, he knows. This is not unique to the question of Delaware or problems of Delaware. But I tell you, in Cincinnati, they say, well, you're not going on step B till step A is done. Everyone really cares unless you're, I don't know, somebody super special or something like that. But in this case, we really do try to work to facilitate. We understand the developers' conundrum. Time is money. Money's hanging out there, and they're making investments in our community. We're not, but they do. And that's important. But there's also importance in protecting the process and the community's interest in how these developments get done. We just had a whole discussion on landscaping tonight, for example, of that. None of these processes, I haven't seen a perfect process, by the way. Neither have I seen a perfect development yet. If I see either one of them, I'll let you know. I've seen some that are a lot better than others. And ours is, you know, it's like, say, we've probably hit about the middle, probably about the middle ground in terms of the process we take and how we go about it by central housing standards.
So, this is coming about because of the current map alignment?
No, we're having a lot of discussions with the BIA on a number of different issues. This is one of them. But there's also a development in process that the case is trying to be made for bonding. Again, I'm not quite sure how, I'm not sure how the confusion arose, but it's there right now. So, I wanted to take the opportunity to, you may not know all, you probably don't know all these steps, so I'll just explain it to you. He'd just be handy with the case, and then, you know, a year and a half later, you start seeing houses go up or whatever. Or you don't, and you did an extension.
We had a couple of contractors who wanted to bond, but the estimate was just not there because they failed. The government, county, or the city, whichever I was in at the time, would have led the project and administer it. Now, we're in the prevailing ways. They didn't want to pay those dollars.
The risk is small in a high-growth environment that that would happen. I would say that, but it's there. And just the other technical issue is by recording that final plat, there are rights of record at that point that exists. So, when we change radiuses on a road or something like that, and this section has never developed in ten years, my opinion would be, it'd be awfully hard for us to apply those new standards. And we're pretty careful and judicious in what we try to apply and what we don't, because we know something's been in process. There are some preliminary rights of record as well.
Millbrook is a good example of that today.
And we had to grant father a lot of that. Understandably, you don't like that. But, you know, after ten years, I mean, there are some standards that change.
I just want to get my two cents in here, because this is just one of those things I deal with every day, and I just wanted to add, forget my voice.
Plus, your voice sounds really crazy.
It's not like I've been smoking for thirty years. Essentially, this is, what this puts us into, it puts us into a situation where what's already a high-pressure situation becomes even more so. Generally, this, the acceptance of public improvements is a very helpful part of the process for us, because we know that they need to check box A, B, C, D, and E. And it really keeps everybody in line until we get to that point where, at the end of this season and paving times are getting narrowed, we realize, okay, it's time for us to work with you. But starting out, out of the gate like that, puts us in a position where I feel quality will be compromised. I feel that, and, you know, we've talked about the fact that you wouldn't issue building permits, but I think ultimately, this would lead to some congestion with infrastructure contractors overlapping with building contractors. That is a really big problem that we have. The one beautiful part of our process is the fact that the infrastructure gets put in place, and those contractors are out of there. Now, and you can still see the chaos we have with the multiple trade building contractors. But at least we don't have the guys who are installing the water line trying to move around when trusses are getting delivered and, you know, things like that. So, there's, I just see a lot of major intrinsic problems with this if we were to move that box down to the, down to earlier in the process.
I think we're all willing to work toward, we call it a factor in what we do. And we're all willing to do that. And I think part of that in this process and this question for us is, is there a way to make this more formalized and make easier administratively the early start process? And can we, to your point, Mr. Tucker Buck, I think it's important and incumbent upon us to be very clear as to what's the infrastructure that has to go in before we're even entertaining anything, and, you know, items that are punch-out and then the inevitable arguable items right at the margin that are going to come up as construction is just a messy process.
Okay.
So.
I don't think anyone's in favor of teaching the process.
Keep that horse with them.
Okay.
Definitely not.
All right. Moving on then. Thank you. Appreciate your work on this.
You want some more?
No.
I'm good.
I don't think we need to change a single thing.
Except for that.
It's not broken.
I think I'm just accomplished, like, a lot tonight.
Oh, wow.
A lot. So, commission member comments, given the lateness of the hour, I will limit you to two seconds, approximately.
Fair.
Go ahead, Mr. Ritter.
Good job tonight, Paulon.
Thank you.
Poor guy left his tail.
The whole career work effort culminated tonight.
It's called karma. Will you be celebrating?
I won't be.
Southeast side, because of the growth, have you heard anything about a city park or any type of community meetings that might be going on? And if you heard anything about one, that fire station on the southeast side might even go into any type of preliminary? Because, you know, both of those are like now, five and a half years down the road.
Of course, the development's been a heck of a lot slower than we originally anticipated, but it's picking up.
It's picking up.
Park, we're definitely talking about what could make city-scale park in the area, and then it would be an issue of trying to secure lands. So, that's the answer to that. Fire station, the fire chief is moving, I think, this year in some of the preparatory work towards that fire station. But I think, I think I'll double-check, is on the docket for construction next year, if you remember in the budget.
But it should already be in the Capitol Improvement Plan, right?
It's in the Capitol Improvement Plan. But a little piece has to be annexed, yeah, a little sliver of road, the actual site plan for, ask, go through the same process. Actual site plan has to be brought over and construction documents. Now, we have a good blueprint in PRT three. So, and we just did that. But it's slated for next year.
Do you want an update for a more specific timeline?
Yes.
Okay. We can do that. I'm sure the fire chief has more information that he can share with us as to where specifically he is. Okay. Vice Chair Simpson?
I'm good today. I'll save it till June.
Okay. Ms. Tucker Buck?
So, some of you might already know this, but for those who don't, I have reluctantly resigned from planning commission effective this month.
You're here.
What?
You're here.
After this meeting, after this meeting. Sorry, after this meeting, not the beginning of the month, the end of the month. So, this will be my last meeting due to increased responsibility in work regarding travel and all kinds of other things that they want me to do. And then also some personal life changes that have happened in the last couple of months. I've got to put my kids' needs first. So, I really hate doing this, especially because I made a commitment, and I said I would at least do this through December. But with all of the things that are coming up on the planning commission's agenda the next couple of months, especially the high-profile ones, I don't feel like I can put the effort and the time into it that it deserves. And I feel like you guys deserve to have someone here who can put their all into it. So, I do apologize. And hopefully, in the future, if my life and my work calms down a little, maybe, and there's a spot available, I'll apply.
Thank you. We appreciate your service.
You'll be missed.
Wish you luck.
Absolutely. You'll be missed.
Thank you. Mr. Patton?
I'm done.
You're done?
I'm done.
Thank you all.
That's your weed's taken care of.
Well, no, no, no. The weed will be taken care of when you're taking care of it.
Thirty days.
That will celebrate.
I love the trust but verify comment.
So, my next meeting is June first, so we'll be well then. Dave, excellent job with your staff on helping pipeline. As always, the information is top-notch and always still well-prepared for us. So, appreciate all of your work on that. With that, we are adjourned.